Any further? Okay. Number fourteen's, discussion of budget amendments, Mr. Balance and Mr. Ponnell. Motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor?
Aye.
That's one vote. Any opposed?
No.
No?
Roll call.
Ms. Balance, you can't do that.
Point of order.
I certainly can.
No ma'am, I do that.
I don't know. None of us could.
What?
We go through the lengthy process and discussing and cussing, putting items on the agenda and not putting items on the agenda until the appropriate time. Then we get it on the agenda and we can't discuss it because we can't, we don't take a vote. And we had a vote to approve the agenda, which means that each and every item on the agenda should be discussed, and I'd like an attorney's opinion on that.
Procedure that has always been followed is to take a vote to discuss.
There's no one who was a vote taken?
There has been in the past.
It's never-
There may not have been consistently at this table the last meeting or so, but in the past there has been.
Well, as it is, as it is on the agenda, it's set for discussion of budget amendments. The question was, open for discussion? It was voted on? Ms. Balance called for a roll call vote. Mr. DeVito?
I was going to ask what the vote was.
There was none responses on some of them, so do a roll call voting.
Mr. Berry?
No.
Mr. Ponnell?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yeah.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Three to three.
Three to three. Well, I'm going to say yes, due to the fact that I have something to tell you. So, discussion's open. And I'll go ahead and start. The issue came up last time about the Cemetery Commission coming to us with a letter requesting fourteen thousand dollars for a new lawn mower. I checked into it and we repaired the old one for four hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. It's functional back out there, they should be aggressive with it now. We saved thirteen thousand dollars and some odd cents. That's all I got. Any further? It's open for discussion, you better do it now if we ever hold it, because I'm going to cut it off. Mr. Berry?
I'm not sure what balance is looking over to Mr. Ponnell for, but I can tell you the reason I voted no was because I had no idea what this was all about. When we put stuff on the agenda and it gets voted on, I don't know what it's about. And there needs to be a little bit more clarification sometimes for me to feel more comfortable about that. And that's really the reason I voted no. I don't know if that's about the Cemetery Commission budget or what it was about. So, that's kind of where I am.
Well, let me add a little addendum to this. My office absorbed the cost on this and will just bill the Cemetery Commission. The vendors or the people that the items were purchased from have been paid, or will be paid, will be paid. And then we just bill it back to the Cemetery Commission, they'll have to figure out how to pay it. So, I can't see spending fourteen thousand dollars on something we can repair for a little or nothing. Yes, ma'am?
I can look at anybody I want.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
No discussion across the table, please.
Okay?
We had this on our last agenda and we had spoken about some funds for the office of the city clerk. We had agreed to bring that up when we were talking about the mid-year budget adjustment or whatever. And I was satisfied this, so I'm not real clear why this has appeared on this agenda again, so I will defer to Mr. Ponnell to see if he has anything he wishes to speak about.
I second that. As far as I'm concerned, the lack of interest at this table, as far as I'm concerned, it can be removed.
Be removed, not postponed. Is that correct? Is that your statement or motion?
It's my statement.
Okay. It is removed? We don't have to vote on removing it since he's one of the co-sponsors, right? All right. New business.
Excuse me one second, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need a motion or may I just ask the city clerk to place that on her tickler file so this issue comes up again when we're talking about the mid-year budget? Oh, great.
Yeah, we'll probably have several workshops. Okay, now on to new business, better control of yard sales. Mr. Ponnell and Ms. Balance. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss item one, better control of yard sales.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion, go.
I've gotten a couple of emails and phone calls in regards to lack of control. Primarily, I believe that it's in regards to, even though no one has come out and said it directly, the yard sales that occur very frequently on sixty-two. And I was told a couple of years back that there's no way of controlling and the city does not control or track yard sales as far as how many, I believe the code calls for three a year. There's some discussion of whether or not that's by name or by address. If it is by address, the one at sixty-two would be potentially, based on my understanding, is they could potentially have a garage sale there every weekend for fifty-two weeks out of the year, depending on how they handle it. And I do think that something needs to be looked into as far as if we aren't controlling it. You know, we've issued concerns over other things, the way the town looks and the perception that the people receive driving through or to Eureka Springs, and I just feel like it would be remiss on our part if we didn't try to get a better control over it, even though one young lady did call me this evening as I was getting ready to come to the meeting, concerned about how long that, that kind of goes along with what Mr. Berry said, better control of yard sales. She was concerned about how, how long that they had to, that they could put stuff out and put stuff back in after the yard sale date that they had requested, because some people do go to great lengths to, and hard work to put together a yard sale. And she was concerned that, you know, if she had to get her stuff all put away the very next day after the yard sale, that if things didn't sell, that she was concerned about changing anything. And I said, no, the biggest concern that has been expressed to me is the over-frequency of yard sales on sixty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to reiterate this to you all again, that if you all have questions regarding anything to do with the financial end of the city, you could call me at any time. I'm generally in my office. Mr. Ponnell, to answer your question, we'd have a spreadsheet that we maintain on a daily basis as we sell yard sales that show the name, the address of those recipients. According to the code, the permits to be issued based upon information furnished by the applicant, and it shall contain the name of the applicant or applicants. So, any number of applicants can be on one yard sale permit and at the address at which the sale is held, the phone number and the dates of the sale and range dates of the sale. They can have, each person can have three yard sales in one year. And so, on the spreadsheet, we keep track of those people that should have more than one yard sale in a year. So, I don't know what more, unless you change the code to specify specific individuals for three years, or we can't do anything but what's on here.
Ms. Alexander?
So, on a single property, if different people were to apply on that property, it could go on all year.
I haven't looked at the code, it's been a while, so I don't know if there's a timeframe on that. I believe it's a three-day sale. It's a three-day sale. They can only have it on there for three days.
Okay.
Three times, three days, three times a year.
Okay, within the property, even though it's-
The individuals. The property can have as many as they want, based on your code, if you have individual applicants that apply.
That's what I'm saying. So, you could have a property that changes applicants every three days, and that could go on all year long.
As long as they pay.
Okay.
Mr. Berry?
In essence, it's forty, forty people could have the yard sales at one location.
Right.
And in particular, the location Mr. Ponnell was talking about, you know, I see that quite often up there too, but-
So, if you want to change this, I suggest a workshop. Or that's, this is the only thing we have to go by.
Any further questions? All right. Number two, discussion of fluoride water supply, Ms. Balance and Mr. Ponnell, motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go.
Again, I don't know why it is, citizens call me and they don't call some of the others of you about this stuff, so it falls to me to bring forward this stuff that, that people want us to talk about. So, people want us to talk about the fluoride in the water supply, and I know it's been, there's a state law now that, something about any water supplier that supplies over five thousand people now has to have fluoride in their water, or something like that. Also, we know that the citizens of Eureka Springs have voted down having fluoride in their water twice, if I understand correctly, and yet the state sees fit to try to override that against our wishes. So, I'm wondering if we can either, I'm wondering if we truly fit into the over five thousand people that are served, if we could, if we're in with Green Forest and Berryville or whatever that is, or if we can be split off, or if perhaps there might be some way for Carol Boone to inject that vile substance so that it bypasses Eureka Springs, or so that it's downstream from Eureka Springs, or if there's some way that the people of Eureka Springs can have their wishes honored and not have fluoride in their water. That's why I brought this forward.
Mr. DeVito?
The law states water suppliers, so it's an aggregate with the Carol Boone district that there's over five thousand people in the district, so they fall under the state guidelines. Carol Boone's not willing to put a fluoride treatment plant downstream of Eureka Springs because of the cost. They'll just do it at the plant, at the lake, and that's, you know, their statement in yesterday's paper, I think it was, is that it's the state law and they'll abide by the state law. Even though the people in Eureka voted against it, you know, we can't supersede state law.
Anybody else? Okay. No further discussion, move on to number three. Discussion ordinance twenty-sixty, Dr. Kirkpatrick, Ms. Balance, motion to discuss.
Discuss.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to ask our city attorney to write in ordinance to rescind ordinance twenty-sixty for the next meeting.
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Motion made to rescind, I have the city attorney rescind ordinance number twenty-sixty before the next meeting. Seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call. So, we have a record of who said what.
Wait, we didn't have a discussion phase on this.
Okay. We've already voted.
No. We didn't have a discussion phase and that's-
We were back to discussion phase because we've got to do that.
Didn't ask, thank you. What's-
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to know what's involved here and why we're asking to draft another enabling ordinance.
Of course, one we have, I don't feel it's kind of bad.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I think, feel the one we have is working, a lot of those people don't either, well, not actually take any tax money within the city, or just want to change the ordinance as written, maybe kind of something back.
Mr. DeVito?
This is the state enabling ordinance, it was voted on by the people, and I will abide by the will of the people. They were given the option of changing from what has commonly be referred to as the Eureka loophole on A and P taxes to adopt the statewide standard, and that's what this ordinance is. It was voted on by the people, they chose to adopt this ordinance. I don't feel comfortable at all going against the will of the people here. I see there again, I don't know where this is coming from, I don't know what the issues involved here, I don't see any problem, this is all news to me, and I keep a pretty close eye on what the CAPC and what the business community is doing. So, I'm just, you know, really interested to see what the problems are.
Any further? Mr. Williams?
I would ask that your motion that you're getting ready to vote on be clarified, because if you, I understand what you're saying and what Dr. Kirkpatrick just said in his discussion, they're two different things. If you withdraw this ordinance, you're probably going to leave the CAPC defunct. You're not going to go back, you're not going to go back to what you had before, because that's been repealed already. You're going to have no tax basis. If you do it the way the motion was made, if I understood the motion correctly that was just made, is to withdraw this ordinance totally, you'll leave yourself without a taxing authority.
No, I'd like to ask me to write an ordinance to replace this one.
Doing what?
I guess for restructuring, start all over again. I don't want to take any tax money away from anybody, I don't think anybody else says either.
Any further?
I still don't understand what the motion is, I'm sorry. And if you're directing me to act, I would like clarification. If you're asking me to withdraw this ordinance, or make an ordinance that would withdraw this ordinance at your next vote at this table, I believe you'll leave yourself potentially without a taxing authority. If you're asking me to redraft, to go back to the old taxing system, I would like some guidance on how you, what percentages you would like included, and who you're going to tax of the three potential taxing basis.
Mr. DeVito?
There's no other alternatives. Every city in the state of Arkansas functions under this enabling legislation. There is no other ordinance. You can't supersede state law. So, we, we once upon a time had the Eureka loophole, but the voters of the community chose to adopt this, and that's the only one we have available.
Any further? So, what's your opinion? You've been asked so-
Well, my opinion is, at this point, I don't have enough guidance to draft if that's, if they stand by the motion to draft an ordinance to withdraw this, other than to simply withdraw it and potentially leave us without a CAPC.
Everybody's me.
And if you do that, you will have no tax.
Basically, basically, just repeating what James has said, without this, we have no law. We have no tax. And we will have no advertising funds to support our city.
Still open for discussion.
We will be without. And if you, if you don't want this, you're going to have to go about it in a completely different manner.
I understand.
Okay.
Mr. DeVito?
While you may say that, there is no other manner to go to, so this is a moot point. You either repeal it or leave it alone, there's no gray area. And I'm not for one to go against the vote of the people in this community. It was through great effort that we adopted this, and this is not something I take lightly, and I don't think the public would take this lightly.
Mr. Ponnell, you had your hand up?
Well, I had a question that I'd like to direct at the city attorney, since this is supposedly state law and it's written as a city ordinance. I think some of the concern possibly could be addressed, and I think this ordinance could be changed to a certain extent, because if, if you look at two point five two oh one creating the city advertising and promotion commission and the makeup of that commission, I've questioned, and have had several people question me as to the validity of the makeup and the current situation. It's kind of like a prosecutor and defense attorney opening up the floodgates, since it was brought up, it can be discussed. I've been asked, how, how can a sitting commissioner be granted a leave of absence and fill in a paid position and not be able to fill her spot? And since that's appointed by the mayor, I guess that question is directed to you, sir.
That's not appointed by the mayor.
No. All right, let me readdress this-
It's appointed by the mayor.
All right, let me readdress this again. At the last council meeting, I told you all that the commission voted to give her a leave of absence till August two thousand and eleven and hold her seat for her until she decided she was going to take the interim, or the interim directorship or not. They made the decision. They have the power to make that decision, and I'll abide by that decision. Any further? Doc?
So, we have no control of the CAPC whatsoever.
Totally separate entity from us.
Unless we do a way with it.
We have to approve their members.
You vote to approve the members.
I was going to say, it's the same as Parks Commission, we have no authority over them. There's reason for that.
Mr. Berry?
Well, I was just going to say the same thing, Mr. DeVito, there's a reason why the Parks and CAPC are autonomous, because they, so they will not be in, quote, hopefully, the political football field. They have the members to come in, and we get to appoint the members and approve those. But it gets to be real dangerous when people like that, the Parks or the CAPC, start being subject to the whims of political pressure, and I think that's the whole reason for them being autonomous on there, even though we still do play the political football field with both of them when it comes to, with the Parks anyway, but with CAPC. But if people have a concern and problems, and I've been around here long enough, as most of James and Ms. Alexander have, and Ms. Balance, to see, know that, and even Dr. Kirkpatrick, and all of us, I guess, in that respect, have known that there's a lot of political pressure put on the CAPC in one respect or another, even going to the point of having members arrested. So, you know, this is something I think the CAPC does take serious and tries to do what their tax collecting clients ask them to do in promoting the city. You know, that's all.
Thanks, sir. Any further? No?
There's a motion on the table? Yes, actually, there is.
All right, restate your motion.
Make a motion to ask the city attorney to write in ordinance to rescind ordinance twenty-sixty by the next meeting.
Motion been made, may I second it? Any further discussion, last chance. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nope.
No.
Was that everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Forty-two. There were no abstains, no presence, none of the above.
Two to four.
Two to four, I'm sorry.
For the record.
Yeah, thank you. Item number four, ward adjustment, ward map adjustment. City clerk came to me with an issue stating she's been working with the election commission, and she wanted to get this on the ballot, so I put it on the ballot. I should have had my name there, I bow that one. On the agenda, ballot. Whoa, I'm back at it. So, she has the floor, she'll tell you what's going on.
Most people are probably aware that the population decreased by about ten percent, and Levi Phillips came to the office and asked that a process be followed that will lead up to redistricting for the justices of the peace. The numbers were provided by the Census Bureau, and as in nineteen ninety-four, when this process took place, tried to come within ideally five percent of equal population in each of the wards. So, this is a photocopy of this larger map that came from the Census Bureau, wherein they defined sectors and the population within those sectors. So, I looked for the, the smoothest transition from the existing wards to accommodate equal population. And by just pulling a few, and this happened again, also in nineteen ninety-four, when Ward three was the fastest-growing population, they gave up some of their number to the other two wards, and that's the same thing that would happen in this case, so that, basically, that part of East Mountain that is, echoes right above Mill Hollow, it's primarily in there. And if those folks who have been in Ward three are moved over to Ward two, the numbers will be fairly even. And it will take a bit of time to figure out exactly what the addresses are, but fortunately, you need a Barner left, fabulous documentation. And it can be a fairly smooth transition, but it has to be with everyone's agreement that it, it takes place. Apparently, on the last round, the citizens became actively involved, and it all ended up working out to be exactly what the original proposal was. So, the citizens definitely do have a right to weigh in on it. The election commission met on Tuesday, they were anxious to know that this was in process, and I said, yes, indeed it is, and, oh, but I think, Janet, you didn't have a chance to look at this until now, so that's what is happening with that. And if anyone- That's what is happening with that. And if anyone has objections, I'd...
Any discussion? Okay. Mr. DeVito.
Is there not a shifting also between Ward One and Ward Two?
It's interesting that you ask that question, because when I first looked at this map, it looks like this little dogleg that is part of... This map has it appearing to be part of two. The maps that the city is using show that little dogleg as being in one. Fortunately, it's only 14 people. So, either way, it's going to be, we're still going to be within that percentage, the 5%.
Maybe mistaken, but I didn't think that a portion of Dairy Hollow existed in Ward One. And the way I interpret the line on that map, most of Dairy Hollow would now be Ward One.
Oh, the changes are, I'm happy to haul out the existing maps if you really want to see them. But the only changes involved in making this shift, all of Ward One stays exactly the same. This little dogleg, if indeed it does belong to Ward Two, which these maps don't show, that little dogleg would be given up to Ward One, but it would not impact Dairy Hollow at all. The impact is primarily on East Mountain, above where the gazebo is, and a little bit of First Street. And it doesn't, and that's it. And it's a matter of moving 148 people from Ward Three into Ward Two, and perhaps those 14. I'll know when the addresses come in from the Census Bureau, if we've been counting those 14 people in the right ward all this time or not.
Mr. DeVito.
I, I would prefer to know whether, what ward they're in, because it appears that you're gaining 17 people over here between Spring and First Street. If those people are part of that district, I would just leave them there and remove that 17 people that you're gaining. Am I correct? Because we don't have to, rather than notify them of a change of ward, am I assuming that you're gaining 17 by this move right here?
It's this little dogleg right here, not the 17.
That's already part of...
It's this little L that's up here that is, if you, if you go right up the edge of 10, that is Hively, that line between the 10 and the 4.
It's all of one.
So, that gives you an idea. This line that runs along under 25 is Mountain Street. And so, at the very top of Mountain, there are those four people. And then, when you swing around the corner, the 10 people in there. But when you look at the maps that have been being used in the city, that little dogleg isn't there.
They, they would, no, we don't, do we know their names at those addresses?
I'm trying to get the addresses from the Census Bureau to compare with what the city uses.
You cross-check those with voter registration lists.
Well, apparently, the Census Bureau is seeing it differently than the people who are at the polls. And so, that, those 14 people definitely have to be checked. But whether they move or don't move, the other 148 people are basically Mill Hollow, down East Mountain. 148 people from that area would become part of Ward Two.
You're well, you're well within the compliance ratio that the county commission establishes. My only concern was changing somebody's ward that wasn't necessary. If those people in that dogleg are already part of the ward, rather than moving them to a different ward, there's no need to do that, because you are well within that 5% rate that the county's asking the parity between the wards to be.